You'll send us notice, that's fine.
Okay, we're being recorded now, just to remind everyone. Pretty good, turn on your cell phones, I'm on my library. Appreciate it.
There's always one. Be that guy.
It was me once. All right, it's being seven o'clock.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay.
Last shift.
Fair enough. The Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will open the hearing for December 13th. First thing on the agenda is approval of minutes. October 11th, November 8th, we do not have all voting members present. So we will move that to the January meeting. So it being seven o'clock, the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Bruce Davison, trustee, 166 Bedford Street Realty Trust, 312 East Washington Street, Hanson, for a special permit, request pursuant to section 17521A, 1A of 166 Bedford Street. Property located on assessors map 23, lot 19, in the TC zone. Also like to mention on the onset, I am a, on the fringe, I am a butter to this property. Normally, as was last month or the previous time you gentlemen here, I refuse myself. There's not a quorum tonight. So if you wish, you guys may proceed. I mean, I don't have any bearing with on this particular thing beyond the fact that a corner of my lot is within the 300 feet of this particular property.
Yeah, I think it would be Mr. Davison's choice to proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we were here, you might call back, I think it was October 12th or 13th, on this petition, and the board had some questions with the manner in which the petition was presented. Not orally before you, but the petition, the way it was written, and what we were requesting. 166 Bedford Street is a structure of some historical significance insofar as, I mean to say that it's been there for some time. There was a building permit that was issued back in 2014 for some renovations to that property. At the time, the property was owned by George Mallett, who runs Hawkeye Fence, who happens to own the small plaza that's directly next to this property at 166 Bedford Street. And he had proposed doing a duplex rehab there. It's in the, it was at that time in the transitional commercial zone. It is in the highway commercial zone as we speak. And so, what Mr. Davison does for a living is HVAC work. He owns his own small company, does a lot of residential as well as some commercial. And he saw it as a perfect opportunity to move his business from the town of Whitman to the town of Abington. And so, the HVAC, you might recall, we talked about that aspect of what Mr. Davison wants to do there, and that's an allowed use in the highway commercial zone. And so, at the end of the last meeting that we had, we had inquired if the board would have any difficulty with us going forward with him using the property for the first floor for his HVAC business, and the board seemed to echo a sentiment that you were comfortable with doing that. And so, he has been doing that in a very modest means. He had a shop in Whitman, he's closed that down, and he's shifting general, slowly but surely, he's shifting his operation to the property of 166 Bedford Street. What we had requested from the board previously was two accessory apartments, one being a one-bedroom and one a two-bedroom on the second floor of that building. And we had presented a plan, which I understand has to go to the planning board if this board is agreeable with the plan going forward for site plan review. But the plan would allow for a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom on the second floor, and then the shop, which, if you could, how many square feet is the shop on the first floor?
Between 1,500 and 1,800, the garage area is about 1,500, is about 300 square foot of office.
Yeah. So there are parking spaces provided on the site, the required spaces, 1.3 spaces for the one-bedroom unit, two spaces for the two-bedroom unit, and according to the bylaws, one space for each 4,000 square feet of warehouse space. So the spaces required, four and a half, total spaces provided are seven. And so, during the course of our previous meeting, you might recall, the board had some questions that they thought they might like to have answered by town council. And I have inquired as to whether or not there was any feedback from, in the building department, but I wasn't really able to get any specifics as far as what town council might have offered to you. So here we are. If town council has some issues that we need to address with the plan or with the petition, we're happy to do so. Otherwise, we would present tonight and ask the board to make a decision.
Yeah, we did get some feedback. Andy, you want to take this?
Do you mind if I give?
Go ahead. No, 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 no. No, it's not for them.
The information that I requested for you was for your board.
Yeah, right. Andy, I just wondered if you wanted to take this one, so.
I can synopsize what town council says. She says that the application is not adequate enough to give notice to the abutters. So her suggestion is, we act upon the application, and we can deny it for incompleteness, or you can withdraw and resubmit, basically is what it comes down to. It just didn't spell out enough of what you were looking to do.
Yeah.
In order, in order for the public to know what was going to be done there, so.
Sure. I looked at the application after I was here last, and when I drew up the petition, I drew it up with the knowledge that the first floor use wasn't allowed use, so I wasn't asking for permission necessarily from the board to, you know, accede to that use, if you will. And, but then, after being here, I understood where the board might have some questions in the public. Who reads the advertisements might have some questions as well. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask the board for permission to withdraw, and that we would resubmit sometime within the next five days, a new petition, and hopefully, if your time allows, we would be on the docket for the January meeting.
You'd like to withdraw without prejudice?
If I may, please.
You guys go with that?
Yep.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we allow the petition to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So what she basically said, Ron, is there is no description of the project, so you have to be a bit more descriptive than.
So, if I may.
Was a certificate of occupancy for that building, or I don't believe it was?
No. I'm speaking with my client.
We did have a lot of questions about that. I mean, if you're running your business out of there right now, how can you be?
It can't be.
Right. So, I think we mentioned this last time we were here, too, that there were questions about running your business out of there right now.
Yeah. I guess from a zoning standpoint, we were correct in concluding that yes, he could. I didn't understand that he didn't have the sewer hooked up or the locker hooked up. So naturally, he has to get that, and he has to get the certificate of occupancy in order to operate.
Right, right now, it's just being used as a storage facility for myself. But that's the thing, we've owned the property now for a year, and it's taken forever.
I know, we just got to do it right.
I get it. I'm trying to go through the right channels here, gentlemen. I want to make this thing move forward. Right now, it's currently being used as storage, and, you know, I want to hire contractors to do a couple of things, but I want this plan to be reviewed and pushed through in the right channels so that, you know, we put good money into good here, and finish this project and get it underway.
Well, you're mixing commercial and residential. HC is a 20,000 square foot, and they've got 10,000 square feet. And you could have two-bedroom, kids, he's got four vans, he's got somebody for an office, he's going to have a couple employees going to be fabricating sheet metal, he's going to have delivery trucks going to be delivering some materials to his job for fabrication. And the guy's probably going to be loading up the vans to, each day, to take the materials to the jobs. They're going to be coming home and off. You could have kids in the apartment, the two-bedroom apartment, anyway. And I think attention needs to be paid to those amount of spaces for those vehicles to pull up, for you guys to load up for the office employee, for the employees that are fabricating in the, in the shop. And you need four or five spots for the bedroom apartments in one lot, too. And although with 4,000 square feet for a warehouse area, and you've only got 1,400 square feet, when you're dealing with numbers this small, saying, 0.73 percent of a vehicle or something, and then you say, well, I've only got 300, you need one, for 450 square foot office, you need one parking space, but we've only got 200 square feet of office space, so you only need half a car. It's not, you're trying to put all those together. I'm looking at it more, you've got four vehicles, you need four spaces, you've got an office, you need one space, you've got a couple employees working there.
And a back room going on there, and basically, the trucks don't park there.
No, they've got to come in and load up, and you've got to take deliveries. Just something to get in mind, I don't know whether the board wants to say that to planning before, and before you look at, because you need the separation between his business and his residential people.
You need to really look really hard at this, because you're looking, when I look at the property, and no one you look at the property, it's awfully small. And the way, and what you're asking for, you're jamming it on the one small area. Even though it might have been approved before, it may not be approved again on the same project.
It could add up to three units residential there. It wasn't going to be mixed.
I mean, it's a small area to run a business and have two apartments.
Basically, guys, it was a duplex, with two two-bedroom duplexes that was approved. I'm taking away.
It was approved before.
I'm taking a one-bedroom, and I'm taking a car out of the garage, and some boxes of G-men physics in there. There's ample room in that parking lot. I've had all the trucks there at once, it gone, never even been up front, no one's even seen me pulling in and out of there. There's a closure for the dumpster, it's got fenced on both sides, there's plenty of room back there. And actually, the spots is, there's actually eight spots, Ron, on that drawing, not seven. And the spots are 10-foot spots, and the neighbors' spots are all nine-foot slots. And he's got eight apartments, or 12 apartments, right next door to me.
Well, it's what's approved today, not what's approved before.
Yeah, but that'll, that'll all come in as part of the new. You're going to, you're going to resubmit, you're going to describe what's going to happen, and then we'll see what goes from there.
All right.
Nancy, what's the deadline if he wanted to be on January's docket?
I could talk to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
All right, it being. Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Patricia Barilat, 260 Carver Road, Plymouth, for a special permit to convert existing structure on the premises to an accessory apartment at 981 Bedford Street under 17521A1A. Property located on assessors map 60, lot 28, in the HC/R20 zone.
Yes, good evening, any guests. I represent the applicant, in this case, Patricia Barilat. And we filed this under 17521A, asking for an accessory apartment. And since the time of filing, there has been a change of heart on the part of Ms. Barilat insofar as she would like to amend the filing to a request under, it's the section 17521A2, which is to ask that it be declared a two-family. And there's a reason for that, because she would like to sell the property, there'd be no outside changes to the property or whatever. There's, for those of you that are familiar, there's been a bridal shop out the back of the property for years, and that closed down, I guess a few years back, hasn't been really used since. So what I have done since filing this is I have refiled the application, asking for the two-family designation under 175, section 21. And I understand that's going to have to be, you know, re-noticed and re-advertized. And so, I have given all those papers, filed all those papers with your secretary. And I would ask that I be able to withdraw the petition before you, in favor of the petition, which would be on the docket, hopefully, for January.
Any questions, guys? Actually, I'm just curious, you have two zoning designations for this property.
Well, if I do, that's a mistake.
You said HC/R20.
Oh, it may be, it's a split district.
Marshall, are you aware of any of that?
I'm not. I would have to go down and look, I will, if you want.
Do we have a map? Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't rank big maps here.
Yeah, it's a split district.
Try to keep the taxes low.
Yeah, it's a split district, if you look at the plan.
The lot is transected?
Yeah. The back part of the lot is R20.
Was I missing that page?
Well, it says that the.
It was a clock, man. It was a task.
Push 50 feet, so.
Oh, yeah, it's in the back.
HC, it's 20 feet. The two-family. In R20 would be a special permit as well, anyway, but it's, it's in the EC.
So mostly in the EC, 90%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get the lots, please.
But you want to withdraw this particular petition anyways, right?
Yes, if I could.
17521.
Have you filed the other one yet, Ron?
I haven't.
I made the motion, we allow him to withdraw this without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you again. Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Being after 7:10, Abington Zoning Board of Appeal will hear the petition of Dana George, 33 Stetson Street, Whitman, for a special permit under 17521E4, and variances under 17521G3, 17521G5, 17521G6, and 17521E3. Gentlemen, to convert vacant unit into a taproom at 477 Washington Street, property located on assessors map 23, lot 178, in the CBD district. You guys are regulars.
Yes. What's up?
The short of it is, we're trying to expand the business, and we have a great opportunity to have some space right next door to where we're currently at. The intentions are to make that our taproom, and where we currently are at 491 stays simply production. So there would be no taproom or any.
Oh, oh, really?
Customers at 491, they would go to space next door.
And that is, the proposed location is Dr. Thomas's property, correct? Is that, I mean, it's kind of a, a big unusual shaped building.
Right, like an L, or?
It is like an L, yeah, exactly. And we would take the, the front part, which is actually right next to our building, which is vacant now.
So renovate like that?
Correct.
The front that's facing the square?
Yes.
Right on the corner of Dexter and Washington.
That would be, that would be good.
Yeah.
All right. So they're looking for a special permit, 17521E4, which is space for manufacturing, assembly, or packaging of consumer goods.
And that's, there's another company in there that does rubber, I think.
Yeah, Babel.
Yeah.
So that's relatively easy, but now they're looking for variances under 17521G.
G word, variances.
I know. Three, which is bottling of beverages. Five, which is place for manufacture, assembling of goods, provided that all resulting cinders, dust, flashing, fumes, gases, odors, refuse matter, smoke, and vapor be effectively confined to the premises or disposed of in a manner that does not create a nuisance or hazard to safety or health. There's also G6, I may continue, gentlemen. Wholesale business and storage in a roofed structure. Does that apply?
Well, I'm not sure any of these apply, that's what I was going to say.
Well, no, I think.
I had some questions to ask.
All right, so let me just get.
There's one, there's one more, too.
Let me just get through this lot. I think we have one more gentleman, right? And 17521E3, which is officially, it is drive-in or open-air restaurant or other, or other, it's a duplicate. Establishment providing food and beverage with no live or mechanical or electronic entertainment. Okay. So that's what you're asking for. And sometimes, it's probably better to ask for more than you need.
Yeah.
Than to realize you needed to ask for one more thing, and it isn't that.
For 491, everything was, all of those were granted, I have the relief right here, except for the outside dining.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So it was for the same?
Same, for the same.
One, that's at 491. This is what was granted them, that the only difference between this and that is outside dining.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So manufacturing, the other side of town. What you have now, like the building you have now, that's what you want to do with the new place? How, how big?
Taproom.
Yeah, how, how big is the taproom, though? You don't really show any.
Currently, or?
The new, the proposed.
We've got a sketch, we do have a sketch of the proposed.
It's roughly 1900.
I don't think we got a sketch. Not that I saw.
So it's his first one, then? Right here?
No, I didn't see that, I've seen that.
This is Washington.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that, that's not.
Are you going to actually do any brewing on this, in this establishment?
So the reason we are asking for the first four, that you went through, as Adam mentioned, was the same four that we applied for 491. We are a, we have a farmer's brewer's license, and the state is issued by the state of Massachusetts. In order to get a farmer's brewer's license, you have to produce a portion of your product on the premises where you sell it. So we would, and it's represented roughly on this plan, we would have to have some level of production capacity. There are no stipulations as to how much of our product we would have to brew at that location, but in order to qualify for the farmer's brewer's license, you have to produce on the property where you, you sell it. So we'd be producing still at 491, we technically could sell it there if we, if we desired, because we're making it there. We have to install, and really, the idea is to install some small pilot system, you know, nothing big and elaborate, because we do want to maintain as much of the space as we can for customers, just to meet that, that qualification for a farmer's brewer.
So this dining, outside dining area, which would be facing your old building? Am I correct?
Yes.
Outside dining, though, is this a residential area?
It abuts residential, yeah. In fact, more of their property is in residential R30 than it is in CBD district.
And we had issues with that before with the Polish Club.
Yeah, that, that was HTC, R20, and then it became, I think it's HC, R20. And they had.
Kind of close to the street.
There was substantial differences with the Polish Club as well, because a lot of that was in the rear of the building, which was circumferenced by residential.
Yeah, I see that is not, but we have to be careful.
No, absolutely, I'm just.
With permitting for outside in a residential area.
Right.
It looks like a great project, but it is a residential area.
Correct. Well, where's the, where's the property line, where's the zoning line on that, Marshall? Do you?
You've, I've got it here, drawn up, and then you've got the zoning map there. I've got something downstairs that highlights the whole thing, if you want to look at it with thinner lines rather than that big fat roping line that's going through there.
This is the intersection, right?
Right, yeah, that's where they are now. Next to us.
And then you're looking at.
That's, that's hard to tell from that.
Then you look at this, they've got it right here.
So it's really like this, when you're looking in, right?
This is.
Yeah, that's them, yeah. The stock.
I know, but that's, I believe that's the property. Marshall, or is it that one?
I think it's that one.
It's the, all of this.
If that's the case, most, I don't know, most of that appears to be.
Facing the street.
And it also appears to be, so across the street is their, their property, that's the 7-Eleven, the post office, that's the hair cutting salon, right?
Oh, there is.
Yeah. It seems like it, that's, that's hard to tell.
How many, how many seats are you looking to have?
Three or four tables is what they have.
No, that's outside, but I'm talking about inside, how many?
Oh, here, you want to look this again?
Can you just tell me how many seats you're looking to have, just?
We, that's a very rough sketch.
Oh, this says, this says 40, this says 40 seats, this says 40 seats inside.
I mean, you've got plenty of parking, there's no doubt about that.
That's, I think one of the reasons we're excited about this project, as you know, the parking we have currently is.
Tight.
Tight, yeah, very tight.
So this would alleviate a lot of those challenges.
But I, I do think we have an issue with the outside, I mean, I do. Would it be a residential area?
I'd like to see a more detailed zoning map on that part.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of hard to read that one.
This is.
I'll go get it right now.
This is the property map, right, gentlemen? And so, this is Dr. Thomas's, this is the manufacturing, and this is the area you gentlemen are proposing, correct?
So you're fronting onto Washington Street.
Correct.
Yeah, they're facing.
The entrance would be in the rear, in the parking lot.
Okay.
And the only access to the outside area would be through the actual.
This is a seasonal thing, too, right?
Yes, yeah. And it would be fully enclosed.
The patio.
What about safety there with the road, though?
Like I said, I mean, we've, again, like Patrick says, it is a rough sketch, the idea being that it is an enclosed space, it's not going to be an extensive space, maybe three or four tables, again, with access only from the inside of the building itself.
It would obviously work with the building department to figure out what kind of requirements would need to be there for, for public safety. The reason we're requesting it, honestly, is because a lot of the other breweries in the area, Weymouth, Bridgewater, have some type of outdoor seating, it's an incredible draw for a business in the spring, summer, fall months. So for us, you know, we're looking to attract more people to Abington if we can, rather than, on the nice days, rather than having to go to Bridgewater, Weymouth, and other areas.
But you can, you've got to understand what we're talking about, I mean, at least what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, um, it is a residential area, so it's cutting close with the zone. We've already turned down outside, um, functions or seating areas, uh, 'cause of residential area, but this is, this is unique though, because it's facing the street, you're not facing the residence, um, it is, it's a different scenario.
What are the, um, what are your current proposed hours of operation for this? 'Cause you kind of, you're not forty hours a week over there in terms of being open for customers.
The latest we close currently is nine o'clock. Eight o'clock on Saturdays and nine o'clock.
Are you gonna have different hours for this one?
That's something we talked to the selectmen about, obviously, but I mean, we're not, we're not looking to be a place that's open till midnight.
No, 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 I mean, more, more days or whatever.
Absolutely, that's part of the reason we want.
'Cause now you, now you're, you're making the bill over here, and you have the shop over there with the street.
Yellow is the cost.
There's nothing.
Yellow one.
This is the district.
It would be all production.
'Cause I, I seem to remember.
This is the.
You did have something.
CBD, yeah, third in the back, okay.
For, for like, uh, an area to drink in.
So that building is basically CBD?
Wasn't that gonna be open?
Correct, am I misreading that, or am I?
Some of it is.
New location, that's the intention of it overall.
Oh, the, the hand drawn line is the?
No, to have just a taproom.
That's the district line.
Well, no, I'm, I apologize, I'm talking about the, on the other side of town.
491, that will be just production.
What's 202?
All the time that we're gonna be.
What's 202?
Okay.
Is that part of it as well?
Oh, as far as having space there.
That's why you had that little area there that you're gonna.
Little ranch kind of place there.
Right.
So you're moving out of the place you have right now?
It looks all like all one piece.
You wanna move across.
The building is here, right?
And the new one that you built that was in that right now.
Somewhere in here, and then they got.
Did that have a residential area?
Yeah, parking out here.
Yeah. Oh, you're not doing that?
It's looking over here, and this is.
Oh, okay.
This is the district dining right here, this is, this is the, uh, 30.
Oh, that squash now?
Right here.
Okay, alright, okay. That's over by Sullivan Tire, correct?
Yes.
I remember that project.
This is where he's talking about putting his outside dining right here.
So you're gonna brew across the street?
We're gonna brew where we are currently.
Ah, okay. So you're staying where you are with the brew?
Yes.
'Cause I do remember you, you were here before us.
Yeah.
For the Sullivan Tire.
Sorry, for the sidebar, um, so this is.
So as far as the outdoor, you know, you said this is rough, do you have an idea of how many seats you would be looking to have?
202 is.
We're picturing a max of four tables.
The lot for the old.
With how many, with how many, with how many seats?
Well, probably all four tops.
So this is, and this is.
So sixteen, sixteen seats?
It's not a very large area.
Oh, really, right there? It crosses?
In hours, now, what are your hours currently?
We'll take it with, like Patrick said, the latest being nine o'clock, Thursday and Friday, Saturdays are closed today, those would probably, we would probably request to extend those slightly, but again, it's not that type of establishment.
I understand, yeah.
Is 179.
But if, if a variance were to be granted, we couldn't condition the hours here, as opposed to the selectmen doing it, so I'd like to know what exactly you're proposing for hours, if, if you could get that.
We would probably expand more so daytime hours, as opposed to being open at four or five o'clock at night, we would open more so during the day, into the night.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're in residential area for the dining, that's what we're talking about, right?
Maybe.
The four, maybe?
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I can't.
It, it's so close.
It probably touches.
You agree, that's?
You're a budding anyway.
You're a budding.
Regardless, you're a budding, and that's what you're talking about, and if you're not sure, I suppose, you put it all together, you get more of a better feel for it, they could withdraw without prejudice and be able to come back after they get something better laid out if you're not comfortable with this. Unless you're comfortable with it.
So let me, let me ask, um, is it, can they withdraw, I, I believe they can just withdraw one aspect of?
Just withdraw the outside dining request, and they can ask you if.
They come back?
And, and you can allow.
Yeah.
And vote on the rest of it, and then that will not preclude them from coming back at a later date.
Yeah, I'd wanna see a little bit more, I need to, you know, of where, I'd wanna see more of what the abutters are and all that stuff in that, in that instance, but let's, I mean, that's just kinda where I'm at.
Or, like we did previously, we could, we could ask them to get a little more specific, continue it, so, and they could come back with a little more specificity, 'cause I, I would like to know what the exact number of seats are gonna be out there, I'd like to know what the exact hours they're proposing, 'cause we can condition this, if the variance is granted, we can condition it, and we can put hours on it, and we can put the number of seats on it.
That's what.
I would like to know that kind of stuff.
I think we need more information, that's what I think. So, let's, let's look at this again, you're keeping the building you're right now, you keep it produced there, you wanna go across the street and build this right there. Alright, um, so now we got an idea where the function is, where you're going. Again, I thought you had a building right outside of town. Alright, so, um, you guys all set for now? I wanna open it up, yeah, I wanna open up to the floor and just see what, is anyone here for this? Okay, alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna pick one of yous, stand up, name and address, I'll just start off, sir.
My, yeah, against my facts, you're out, directed by her. I, these guys have been wonderful neighbors.
Yeah.
Um, my only concern would be, I think you answered the question, sometimes the on-street parking is a problem.
Yeah.
Not all of them. And mentioning the extra hours, if they're gonna, if they're gonna come in off Dexter Ave, it's a little bit more, little bit more traffic coming in between me and the dentist's office than what we used to. But, I don't know, I'd say we're coming in off Washington Street, I don't have an issue.
Okay.
But that's really all, they've been good.
Okay, well, that's good to know, that's good to know.
May I ask, can I ask your opinion, sir?
Yes.
As in a butter regarding, uh, the proposed out, outdoor seating?
I, I think that's not in my jurisdiction, I wouldn't sit out there, because I've seen people come around that corner.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too, yeah, that street is.
But you're in a butter, would that create?
I don't have a problem.
Would that create a nuisance for you?
No, we've gone over, gotten hot dogs when they have them. It's not a problem.
Take care of your neighbors, you're, you're alright, you're alright. Sir?
Uh, Doug King, I'm 53 Dexter Ave, um, I'm all as supportive as these guys have been great neighbors ever since they've been there, I can't say enough about them, so I have no problem with an outdoor dining area, so I'm all there for whatever they want to do. They've been great neighbors.
Thank you, that's good. Sir?
This is my old 20 Rock and Heaven, that's a little shopping center over there, I will be, uh, 7-11.
7-11, yeah, right, yeah.
So, I was here a couple years ago, I think we got some new questions, so, yeah, based on my knowledge, I haven't had any complaints from the tenants there regarding parking, which is my only.
I do remember, yeah. That was a concern, I can use a lot, yeah.
You're talking about parking, how many parks, for example, parking, how many parking spots are there?
The gentleman said sixty-one.
And, um, so you're talking about forty seats inside, and then we're on sixteen outside, is that correct?
Roughly, it's, it's.
Fifty-four.
Yeah, probably around there, yeah.
That's pretty much what you're talking about, right?
But generally, yeah.
Well, they, again, so I can stick the same position I had years ago, if it's an issue with parking, I mean, I have to fill cars and whatever I have to do, um, you know, to avoid a cross by tenants.
Sure.
That's, that's my major concern. Other than that, I'm not, I don't have a problem with anything negative from the tenants regarding that, I have some issue with a little next door to me, which I've got to take care of, but, um, you know, I just wanna make sure we're still good, yeah. So that'll be able to go on the record.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Anybody else, huh? That's it? Alright, all positive, that's good, um, back to table.
A couple, couple more questions on the food, what type of food do you plan on serving? Are you gonna have a full kitchen?
No, 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 it's, it's pretty much gonna be where we're at now, food trucks, um, we are.
'Cause you have the food, you have a food prep in the building here, right?
That was just for the purpose of the sketch, with that being said, we are looking at the possibility of pre-prepared foods, pretzels, uh, we have, we have a contact who makes pretzels, that we would potentially just heat in and out.
Heat them up.
Yeah.
I've been to Bauhaus Z, they do that kind of thing, right?
Yeah, stuff like that, yeah.
Epinadas, whatever, yeah.
Bauhaus Z, huh?
I've been to your place, too.
Where do we stand here, guys? What do you think? So Andy, you seem to have more questions.
Well, I'd like to get, I'd like to get a, I don't know if this is something you guys would agree to, but I'd like to get a little more specificity onto the exact, you say it's maybe around forty seats, I'd like to get an exact number of seats, both inside and outside, what exactly your proposed hours are going to be.
Okay.
I mean, if you're looking to the outside a little bit more on the zoning, just to get a good idea on that.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna get an idea on that.
It looks like a good project, though.
It's, it's a nice use, it is, but just, just so you know, variances, and you guys know, variances are not easy to get.
Right.
Right.
You have to prove certain things, I don't know if you're aware of what they are, but that might be something you wanna look into, too.
With the idea being, too, that corner is pretty, pretty rough looking right now, and if that's considered Abington Center, or at least one of the centers.
We're excited about it.
Yeah.
We're gonna finalize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yes, I agree, it, it, yeah, I think it'd be a very.
I think we wanna see more, and, and, again, personally, I think it's a great project. The thing that scares me the most out of it is, um, the outside dining, um, again, we've had issues, and we don't want any issues, it's great that the people came and supported you on these things, but, um, I think we need a little bit more, though, just a little bit more.
Do you want to, um, make a motion, continue it then?
I, I think so, but I, just a couple more questions, maybe Marshall can answer these. Do you, do you think all of these are applicable, that they're looking for, Marshall? Bottling of beverages, are you actually gonna be bottling beverages?
It would be similar to what we do at 491 now, where customers can come in and choose to stay.
Yeah.
Or they can bring in their rowers to be filled.
Oh, that's a reason why.
Is it considered bottling?
Technically, I'm thinking, uh, some of the kegs too is also considered bottling as well.
But you're not gonna be doing keg.
Mainly, we'd be filling the kegs mostly at 491.
Yeah, they could be filling.
That's probably what it is.
Filling rows.
Is that bottling?
Yeah, it is that, well, it is, I mean, they're filling it and they're capping it.
Yeah, that's true, they're putting cap on it, that's true, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, again, you'd hate to have them shut down, you know, by someone who goes, well, you're technically doing this and you didn't seek this permission.
I'm just saying, if you don't have to get a variance, it's easier not to get a variance, if you have to, that's my point.
But, do you get a variance for it, I can understand why they get the variance for it, because?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see if there's ways that you don't have to get some of these, 'cause as I said, they're not, they're not easy to get, so. Uh, the other one, manufacturing, assembling of goods, is this, is this actually manufacturing or assembling of goods?
Yes, making the beer right there, yeah.
Rules make what?
Wholesale business, wholesale business, this is not a wholesale business?
Could be.
It's not, it's a retail business.
Do you not?
You sell it.
Sell to restaurants?
To retailers?
Oh, you do?
Yes, you do, because, um.
You sell to bars and restaurants.
Alright, I'm just asking.
Nope.
It's wholesale, it's wholesale, then, you're doing wholesale?
You're making the check box, huh?
Okay. And is this actually considered a drive-in or open-air restaurant?
If it had outside dining, it would.
They're not dining.
No, drinking, serving beverages, serving anything.
I did wanna comment on that word, and I, it's, the terminology is in the paper, but it's not dining, per se, it is.
I consider a drive-in, like Sonic, that's a drive-in. Open-air restaurant, I consider a clam shack, this is, this is a restaurant with some.
It's as close as we have to anything with regards to driving, drive-through, open-air, outside dining.
Yeah, okay.
And if we, if it's not listed, this, it's not allowed, um, and that's as close as we get to.
So does that, does that make it okay to drink outside? I mean, when the Polish Club came in front of us.
Yes, as long as you can't walk away with your beverage.
Okay, so on the premises?
Well, the select, the selectmen still have to issue it.
Oh, okay, I just, I just wondered about the backbeat on that.
Yeah, I think you have to go through two steps, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, just, just another, just on my soapbox, just another reason to take a look at the zoning bylaws again, 'cause these things changed, when these zoning bylaws were drafted, there was no such thing as nano breweries, micro, this kind of stuff, that's why you need to review these all the time.
Yeah.
And update them, so.
So it looks like to me that they need to get all these, what they're.
I would like to see if you'd do that, and if you don't mind, come back at the next meeting and.
With the additional information.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Now, do we have any time considerations on that, Nancy? From the time they filed, we still can proceed for another month?
Oh, no.
They filed November, so you've got ninety days, a hundred days, whatever.
We're just, we're not saying no, you know, we just wanna have more information. I personally think it's a great project, it's a good idea, um, but I think we just need a little bit more. Um, did you wanna see something else? Did you wanna see?
I mean, that's basically what Mr. Burbine was saying, is what I'm, I guess, most curious with, and I will, I didn't have the sketch of the, you know, of the overhead view of the property on the packet, um, so I'll go back and visit that property a little bit more to see of the potential, um, you know, impact it would, there would be to, to the abutters, and I think that'll help me make a, a better decision. And I think that'll help me make a better decision.
And I would ask you again, take a look at the statute, Master and Law's 48, Section 10, as to what you actually need to prove in order to get a variance?
Can you reference that again?
Yep, 48, Section 10. Okay. That would be helpful, too.
So I'll make a motion on the petition of Dana George, 33 Stetson Street, Whitman, for special permit and variances regarding the property at 477 Washington Street to be continued. Is January okay, gentlemen?
January 10th.
January 10th, 2019.
You guys agree with that?
I'll second that.
Everyone agree?
Aye.
Okay. We'll see you on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
Yeah.
Everybody?
But this may update as well.
Oh, that's true. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great. If being after 7:15, Abington Zoning Board of Appeal will hear the petition of Thomas Mangione, 240 Plymouth Street, for a variance under 175218A for variance to convert to family at 240 Plymouth Street. Property located on the system. Map 47, Lot 36, in the R20, R30 zone. Is everything in a split zone today?
Oh, this is... This is a different split zone.
Yeah. It's not? When Nancy and I looked at the maps that have the color, it looked like the... One of the zone colors was on my property line. But then I... After I filed, I went and talked... I talked on the phone to Ms. Wong, her wife.
Wong.
Yep.
And she said on her more detailed map, the border between the two zones is on my north property line. So I'm in a butter of...
Okay. So this is... What is the zone, then, sir? Is it the R20?
30.
The R30? All right. Thank you, Marshall. All right, make your case, sir.
So this all started two owners ago. Mr. Travie petitioned the city to add an addition onto the house for the purpose of use of it as an in-law apartment. And he built a... About a 2,100 square foot, three-bedroom, three-bath, living room, kitchenette, dining room combination structure. There were some issues of it being too close to the property line. He came before you guys, and you granted him those variances. And he went ahead and constructed that. It was for the purpose of his... As I heard, it's for the purposes of his mother. And so after he built it, she moved in. She didn't last very long. But when he built it, he built it with the old part of the house and the new part. He had two heating systems in each part, two electrical systems in each part. And the story that I heard was that after his mother passed, in planning forward, he wanted to turn this property into four condos. Now, we... Nancy and I looked, and there was no evidence that he ever actually applied for that. And he never actually applied officially as an accessory apartment, because I think he didn't collect money or rent from his mother. He just... On the building permit, it says purpose is in-law apartment kind of thing. So the family that bought the house from him had three teenage kids and a couple. So the five of them used the space as a single-family house. And in fact, they took the appliances out of the kitchenette and of the living room, although they left all the plumbing there. So I bought it wanting to have a two-family situation, thinking it would... The fact that it did have, I thought, in-law status before and that the tax department has been collecting two occupancy taxes forever on it. So I thought it would be relatively easy to come before you and say... Or I didn't even necessarily know I had to come before you, but to come before you and get this made into a legal two-family. It is a big house now. It's 5,100 square feet. And basically, to make it into a legal two-family would allow me to economically keep it up. It... I'm not too far from retirement. And to maintain a 5,100 square foot house, number one, I don't need that space. But number two, it would be hard economically without the ability to get some legal rents from that section. I do have some pictures that might help, because one of the aspects of this house is you cannot really see the apartment from the street. It's pretty invisible. Marshall, I think you've actually... Have you been? Did you tell me you've been to the house?
I don't know.
Maybe.
Yeah, please.
Thanks. Nancy, do you need one of these, too?
Do you have one more?
Yep.
No, you can... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So this is the front view. The only part of the apartment that you see is the second story of what looks like a garage, but it's not actually a garage at all. And the second picture, it has two driveways. My car's the white car on the right-hand side. And then the second picture shows the driveway that I would call the apartment's driveway. It's a very long driveway. It goes all the way back and probably at least four cars there, maybe five. And then this third picture just shows... There's actually a circle in the front. And when we have visitors, that's they tend to park there. And then the last page actually shows the apartments on the back. And you... And so it's basically each of those three salt boxes are the apartment. The first little salt box is the... It's the living room. The middle one is one of the bedrooms and a bathroom. And I took one of the bedrooms and used it as a kitchen. And then the second floor of the... Where the little cupola is, is the second bedroom. Our property is basically off to right. So it's an interesting property. It basically touches... It's almost like an L. It touches at the corner.
So if I may interrupt, so this with the cupola the frontmost, the second taller one in this is all one apartment?
Yes, except where the cupola is.
Yep.
The first floor is a game room that we used.
For the first house?
Right.
For the... Okay.
Right.
For the house that is... So that's this part. It's the game room for this?
Yes, for that hut. It's basically where the...
And that's the garage?
Where the garage... It used to be... Many years ago, I was told it was an auto repair shop. And so... But anyway, right now, it's a... It's a game room.
Okay. Where's the entryway to this particular apartment?
You can see it on the... That last picture on the backside. There's a stairway right there in the middle.
That's how you're accessing? There's no front entrance?
That is... I mean, when you come around, there's no entrance on the front of the house.
Right.
You have to come down the driveway. There is two other... There are two other means of aggress. There... See where their deck is here in the very back property? There's a doorway out there. And then, as part of Mr. Travie's ultimate plan of four condos, there's a stairway that goes from the cupola bedroom out to the side, the backside of that. So there are three means of aggress that is totally within their property. There's also a doorway between my house, my part of the house and the apartment. You know, I think the other thing maybe to just point out is next door, there's a two-family house. Across the street, there's a three-family house on Plymouth Street there, 58. It's not like we're talking about a cul-de-sac neighborhood. This is a relatively busy road.
They zone differently than that, though? Are they zoned differently?
I think they were built...
I, too.
The current zoning maps were created, so they predated.
Well, he'd say his neighbor was an R20, which is a smaller lot.
Right? Well, I... Yes. Actually, what he has is he has almost two lots. There's an empty space between our properties and then his small house.
In R20, by special permit, you were for A8 conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than three families, provided that exterior design structure is not changed from the character of a single-family unit and further provided that each dwelling unit resulting from such conversion shall comply with 17528, which is the minimum floor area for size of apartments. That's allowed by special permit in R20. But you've applied for that. You want to convert this into a three-family in R30, where it's not allowed?
Two family.
Up to?
Up to, to three. So you want to do two. Then what is the hardship?
Well, the hardship is for the future.
You bought a big house that's a single-family, or maybe arguably you have an in-law, a grandfellow, in-law.
Yeah, I just have...
If you bought a big house with maybe grandfellow, in-law, where's the hardship? They're going to be asking you that.
Right. Well, I mean, the hardship is just... Is anticipation of retirement. I can't afford to maintain that house. And so if we can't convert it into a two-family or if one of my daughters doesn't decide that she wants to live with us, which at the moment neither of my two daughters have an interest in doing that, then we would sell the house.
So this has been... The addition was in 2000?
Yes. Well, I don't know exactly... That's when the permit was granted. I don't know how long it took to actually build it.
It was inspected a year later.
And I don't... I think they sold it to the Panicos in 2004. I believe... Maybe 2006. I'm not exactly sure.
So it's changed, changed a few times.
Yeah.
It's interesting that one lot over, it's only a special permit.
That's what is... That's zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, the way the streets are laid out, if one was actually just saying, "Where should... Where would I draw the boundary?" You know, Monroe splits off from Plymouth right at my part of the driveway. And so, in fact, if you say, "Well, the beginning of Monroe Street should be where the zone begins," you might have moved it over one property, perhaps. But it wasn't.
Well, variance is very tough.
It's tough. And the hardship has to relate to soil conditions, which, in my opinion, this does not have anything to do with soil conditions, shape or topography. I don't think it has anything to do with topography either. So I think the only one you can rely on is shape. It can be the shape of a land or the shape of the structure. And as a result of that, is there a hardship because of the shape of the structure?
But this was approved... I mean, we would probably never approve this to be built the way it is right now. I mean, this board...
I do have that letter, by the way, in case that's relevant, that the approval.
Letter? I haven't seen it.
For the...
For the accessory?
Building of the apartment.
Yeah. I have the permit.
But if an accessory apartment is allowed with a special permit in an R30 zone? So that's... Special permit's easier to get than variance.
Big apartment, but it's allowed, yes.
With a special permit, which is what you have.
No, that's an in-law. You're talking in-law.
Right.
And... Yes.
I'm surprised they didn't have to pull a variance, though. I mean, it's so close to the plotline.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe they had to get variances, too, for that.
They got variances here.
For the setbacks.
For the in... For the in-law.
For the setbacks, setbacks.
Setback, side yard variance, and 15-yard, southerly side.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
There were a lot of contractors on the board back then.
And that was March 23rd of 2000. The application was made in July 10th of 2000 for an in-law. And the permit was issued in July 13th of 2000.
I guess if you stretch the definition of shape to include size...
So this is the shape of the building.
It's interesting that...
Really close to the plotline.
Yeah. There was no reason to do that.
No, they could have jogged it over. Taken a little bit of the deck away.
What about the wall?
Actually, what's interesting is the wall actually curves on that property. It starts at five, because that was where the corner of the original house was. And then it curves away till, I guess, when it gets to the end of their house, it's like eight or 10 feet in the wall.
I've actually been in the house. It's beautiful, though.
Previous owners?
Yes.
Well, I can see on one hand where, you know, the building itself is, in essence, the addition was built to almost be its own unit. But that said, you know, it was never, I guess, intended to be a separate unit. And as Andy says, to prove a variance... Yeah, I don't know if there's a line for financial hardship in the variance thing, or if it's all strictly shape, soil, and topography.
No, it should... It can be a financial hardship, but it has to relate to shape.
Right. Because that's usually building something on to, say, shape.
And what about the parking? Are they up on the parking for spaces if it was to go through? Yeah, consider it. Yeah.
I don't think so. I have the language here, I think, for the variance.
See, the biggest problem is that variance is something that this board doesn't like to give out, you know?
Foregone test.
And I certainly... Although I'm biased, of course. But I would certainly understand better or be willing to accept it better if I was asking you for me to build it now. But given the fact that the town...
Well, it's built.
Not you, but the town said it's built. And I'm not doing... Not touching anything on the outside, basically. I just want to be able to have some people live there, you know? And it's now a two-bedroom, by the way. I took away one of the bedrooms. So it's not like we're going to have, you know, the Brady Bunch there kind of thing, even though the bedrooms are big, kind of thing. But so, you know, I think it fits in with the character, and it certainly does not... It doesn't... Nope. I mean, there's no abutters here saying, "What the heck are you thinking about doing?" You know? In fact, as far as they probably have thought, they probably thought it was in a two-family all along. You know, I don't think anybody really understood that it was a single-family.
I mean, it's funny, because the second half of... Second prong of granting a variance is, would it be more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Not going to be.
Right. I don't believe it would be.
No.
But I'm not sure I see the first part. The first part. And given that it's been drilled into us at the downtown council.
I agree with you. But I think the other thing it might not satisfy is, does it nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw? And the intent and purpose of the bylaw is obviously to have single-family residences in R30 zones.
And unfortunately, you're right there.
I know. The line has to exist somewhere, and you're on that line.
Throw a stone right there, and there it is.
And I don't... Again, I'm not... I'm new to Abing... Relatively new to Abing. When were the sort of the current set of zones created? Was...
Because of the most recent zoning matter? This one says February 2003. And then it gets updated, right?
Yeah, I have...
Amended April 2005, April 2007, April 2011.
I have May 2018.
May 2018.
Most of the... I don't think there's a house on my section of Highway 58 there that was built later than 2000 or...
No.
It was 1940. 1940.
And I know it's a three-family, a decker, a couple of them. Two families.
And that's the... And that's the, and again, that's the weird thing. R-20, it's a simple special permit, it's probably a five-minute hearing. Accessory apartment, it's a special permit.
Now, we're going to be against the law, because we don't like to give out the variance by, right? Let me open up to the floor. All right, let me close it to the floor. That's just technology, that's just, something we got to do. What are we thinking?
So, yeah, it's interesting, because, you know, a different board a number of years ago, this would have gone through without-
I don't think we would let them build it today.
Yeah, I don't think it would be allowed to be built. Like I said, if he was simply asking for a accessory apartment, you know, I, and again, been on the board long enough where, on the one hand, I see what's, what's the harm, you know, of this. I don't think we're derogating the neighborhood. I don't think we're sticking our finger in the face of the selectmen, either. I don't think, judging by the zero amount of people in the audience for or against this, I don't think it's a big deal. So, you know what? I'm going to make a motion on the petition of Thomas Mangione to forty Plymouth Street, Abingdon, for a variance under one seventy-five, two hundred and one, A8, to convert a two-family at two forty Plymouth Street, be approved. May as well make some motion on it.
Second?
I can't second it, only because I don't think you meet the statutory requirements. I, I understand why you're here and what you're trying to do, but I just don't think you meet the statutory requirements, so I wouldn't be able to second it.
Okay. Let's vote on it then, right?
No, because you don't have a second.
Damn.
Well, you can second if you want.
I can? I've never done that before.
Absolutely can.
Okay, let's second it. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
No. Okay. There it is. You can appeal. Okay.
You can appeal, you can also, because it's substantially different, you could apply for an accessory apartment special permit at some point.
But?
But that would be, in essence, be an in-law.
Yeah, right. So, I'd have to have one of my relatives live there.
Right. Excuse me?
Accessory apartment. And let's look at thirty-two, I.
You should have done this before you voted. Yeah, go rush it. Rush it.
Thirty-two.
So?
Thirty-two Y does speak to accessory apartments.
So, it does.
Yeah. and the respective spouses of families of owner occupants.
Okay, so, it is that accessory apartment that's spoken to in one A, A1A, is an in-law. There is no such thing as just an accessory apartment.
Yeah, I must assume the definition is the definition.
Because the reason that I'm confused is because in the amended bylaws that we just went through at town meeting, this section was changed, and I had an issue, because they had in parentheses accessory apartments in-law.
Uh-huh.
And I've spoken to council in regards to it, and how we're going to handle that, and whatnot, and that's why I'm having this, but, and the definitions.
Just says accessory use of structure. A use of structure on the same lot with, and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of structure. There's nothing defining accessory apartment.
A per, special permit for the accessory apartment shall become null and blah, 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 and that, that was put in there two seven oh five, so, I'm guessing, yeah, that's it.
It might be worth, once you hear from council, perhaps Mr. Mangione can have a conversation with you.
Yeah.
But right now, it sounds like-
Right now, it's a no.
And it also sounds like the accessory apartment, if I, if I don't have a relative to move in, it doesn't make any sense for me to ask for that.
Correct, but what Marshall's saying is, there was some ambiguity in the wording of the recent changes that he's checking with, with council regarding.
And it might allow, it would be literally accessory apartment without any restriction on who.
That would be the difference, whether I had a relative that was living there or not. Okay, it would fall to conversation.
As it stands, right now, it's denied, but you can appeal.
Who is the appeal? Superior Court.
And so, they are people who know nothing about Abingdon, know nothing about the property, know nothing about the character of the neighborhood, so they're going to do what Andrews did, which was-
They would look to see if we followed the procedure and the regulations correctly.
I mean, the only, the only real basis for this was not in the legal aspect, but it was looking at the property and saying, yeah, this makes sense. It's not going to hurt the neighborhood. It makes, it, it, anybody who looked at it would say, of course, and you guys are the only ones that really have the power to make that judgment call.
It's just that variance part that-
But we're constrained by the law, too, right? We have to, we take an oath to follow the statutes and the bylaws.
But there's, like you said, there's some interpretation about the financial hardship and what, what the word shape means.
Shape, right.
In terms of whether shape-
That's what it comes down to.
Size. And again, that's a judge-
It was self-created.
That's a, that's a, a judgment call that you are in a better position to weigh and balance and say, you know, are we going to have twenty neighbors with pitchforks saying, you know, and the appeals people are not going to, you know, it'll just be a waste of my kind of energy.
You could be tilting at windmills, yes, sir.
Is there any opportunity for, to ask for a reconsideration after you guys sleep on your-
Proposal would have to be substantially different, unfortunately.
Yes, again, given that I'm not talking about making any changes to the exterior, substantially different is hard to-
Right, it's almost impossible to prove.
I mean, I could say, well.
All right.
Sorry, Jack. Sorry.
Okay. Do you know anybody with a big family? Five or six, around teenagers.
Sounds like-
Neighbors will come and say, why didn't you let Mr. Mangione stay there and police this wild bunch?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this point, do we-
I want your jacket.
Oh, thank you. I would realize that.
Do we make, I mean, this concludes the-
Yes.
Regular hearing, and then, Mr. Buran and I have a couple of things to discuss, to reach out the, in essence, go into executive session at this point?
We can't.
No.
No, we can't do that.
No, I think we just, Bill, we can just say that we're still working on-
Okay.
We did get a proposal from Amy. Bill and I haven't had a chance to sit down.
That's great, you're working on it, that's great.
She's, she's written something for us.
Really?
Yeah.
Excellent.
One more question. What would happen if the fourth member were here and the vote was two to two?
It would, it's only-
Only three, twenty-three.
Oh, there were only three votes?
Only three voters, yeah.
I might not necessarily have been sitting here, so I might have come out differently, although, although-
It would not have.
Which is, which is, I'm an associate, an associate, an alternate member, so if somebody's not here, I step in.
But it has to be unanimous.
But it has to be unanimous, three votes. It has to be unanimous.
Okay.
Take care.
So, Bill and I will get something drafted by the next meeting and submit it in advance, so everybody can take a look.
Excellent, that sounds great. That sounds great.
I mean, I've read it, I've-
I've read it, too. We just need to sit down and see if there's-
Is it long?
No, it's what, six, seven pages? She's, she's very good.
For a lawyer, it's very brief.
That's awesome. All right.
I mean that, it's a talk.
So, that's good, that's good that you worked on that, and-
So, we'll have something on, on January eight.
Excellent.
Promise.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
All right, well, what do you guys think?
Draft it over drafts.